We're reconvening as Wyman County Council. Work session, budget work session, Tuesday, May 14th, 2019. Mr. Baker, how are you?
Good, sir.
Great, thank you.
Weston, could you come up?
Fifty.
Could you come up?
Yeah.
Hi, Dallas Baker, Director of Public Works.
Superintendent Rhodes, Wyman County Rhodes.
Page 105 in the book.
169.
Oh, I'm sorry, 169, yeah, yeah, yeah. 105.
Is it section 50?
I don't have a section 50.
We got 51.
Look at the number before 51.
They stuck together.
In that book, you would be number 20...oh, in that book. It is page 105, Joe.
I'm in this book here.
That should be 105 in there.
Page 222.
It's 169 in the small book.
Yeah, 169 in that book, Joe.
Yeah, I know.
There's like four formats.
I was there before.
Yeah, it looked like it was jumping from 46 to 51.
They stick together.
That's why I couldn't see it.
Yeah, sorry about that, Joe. Yeah, 105 was Corrections. All right, so Section 50, Rhodes, page 169, the file. Dallas, if you just want to get started, that'd be great. We're looking for like, you know, major changes that have occurred, things like that. Not necessarily item...not a complete itemization, but whatever you think's important.
Okay.
And then we'll ask questions relative to that.
Sure. So what we did when developing this year's budget was look at the last five years of what we actually spent to try and come up with a very realistic number for each of the various accounts. Some of them went up, some of them went down. Overall, I believe we're asking for less money this year than we have in previous years.
Like a million dollars?
Yeah, it's something.
Six hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Nine hundred and twenty-nine.
Oh, I was looking at nine or any three.
Total roads is 10,204, right?
Yes, and 19 was 11,132, so it's about, yeah, 900,000 difference year for year.
Yeah, we're still finishing up some of the larger projects out there at Rhodes. We've completed the equipment storage shed, but we're starting construction on the additional salt and dry storage material shed. So we didn't ask for a whole lot in terms of facilities. We kept that to a minimum, basically just getting the roof repaired and then also painting the salt shed, the existing salt shed, to keep that in good condition.
So is most of the reduction in the capital stuff then, is that right?
Yes, if you go to page 175 of the budget book, you'll see the capital is about half, a little bit more than half of what they had from 19. So that's $700,000 right there.
So you're talking about Dallas, the stuff you're finishing up now, and you're not having more projects replace those?
Yeah, exactly. As far as equipment goes, we're asking for a couple new dump trucks. One of them had gotten wrecked in an accident earlier this year, so it's an actual replacement. So it'll be one new dump truck, a new signed truck, and then some...one of the things we've been encountering as we work on some of these drainage projects is having...it's a challenge to get our equipment out in the muddy fields. So we put logging mats in, it's about $70,000 worth of logging mats that'll get us about 300 feet out into a field in order to make some of these drainage improvements.
What have they made out? I've seen them on shows on TV.
The ones we're looking at are fiberglass. They do make wooden ones, but the electric companies and stuff like that have fiberglass ones. And there's actually, Lee found a spot that you can buy fiberglass mats that are just slightly defective, so they don't interlock quite just right, but you get them at a discount. So we're looking at those as well.
They're not showpieces.
Yeah, yeah, it's, you know...
We're not looking to string like a mile of them together. They kind of interlock and stuff, so a lot of...for projects that we do, you would more or less just kind of lay them out in front of you, and if they're not perfect, we don't care. You get them, they're just about half price, so that's a good idea. Yeah.
Looking for some money for, again, to replace our mower decks. We have those things on a rotating cycle of every, what is it, every seven years or so is what we're at, replacing a mower deck. There's been some, you know, years past where we didn't replace any, which is why we're asking for two. We're trying to catch up from some of those leaner years to keep the mowers running good.
What's wrong with them?
They just get beat up over time, you know? I mean, they're out there cutting every summer, we got 700 miles of road, you know, you're cutting both sides of the road. Now, of course, all of them aren't used on every single mile, residuals and stuff like that. But, you know, you're out there, the people throw stuff at their car, you hit that when you're mowing over top of it, if the grass is tall. So, yeah, they just take a beating. Yeah, other than that, some of the variable message boards we have, you're supposed to have three lines with eight characters on each line, and two of the ones we have only have two lines on them, so they're just...they're dated, they're breaking down, we need to get those replaced. We're looking for a floating dock to be able to get out to some of our dams and clear stuff off. Dam safety has cited us on a couple spots where they've asked for vegetation that's grown up around the outfalls to be removed, and it can get a bit of a challenge to try to lean over off a piece of equipment or off the side of the embankment and scrape those things clean. Then again, just our usual bridge maintenance issues.
What about the drainage? Money, you know, spending money on drainage, is he that slated for a decrease?
That was...so last year, council had gave us, I believe, $80,000 additional funds. I did not want to assume we were going to get that, so that's the decrease.
And did you spend that?
We are spending that. We're actually working on a project right now to improve the drainage on Cody Cox. We literally just came from a meeting with the Army Corps. We've got the plans in place, we're ready to go out to bid, we're just...we need to get these two permits, or hopefully we don't have to get a permit from the Army Corps. They came out and looked at the project, and we explained, "Look, we're not grading anything, we're not disturbing wetlands, we're to want to go in and remove the sofas and the mattresses and the down trees and just reestablish that flow." And they seemed open to that. The young lady we were speaking with said she needed to go back and chat with her boss. But if we don't have to get that permit, it's going to save us a lot of time because these Army Corps permits are taking six to nine months to get.
So, you know, if the council doesn't do like we did last year with drainage, what do you have, you know, schedule...I mean, what do you have allocated for drainage this upcoming year?
So the funds for drainage studies are in the Public Works Engineering Budget. We do have consultant or contractual services in the Rhodes budget that we can use for some smaller projects, and then we also have a lot of our drainage projects, the bigger ones are in the CIP this year.
As far as like routine, normal, it's just it's worked in our regular budget unless it's a special project, has a project code. A lot of the drainage work we do, it just, you know, it's not necessarily...it's just our labor and fuel, so...
Yeah, well, I mean, it's...again, you know better than anybody, you know, the increased focus we've had here the past few years about, you know, needing to do more projects, you know, I mean, Dallas quarterly about that, you know, so it's just, you know, there's shifting, you know, shifting to focus more towards drainage and anything like that, if we're going to see that?
Yeah, one of the things we were actually talking about before we came here was possibly looking at trying to develop a sliplining contract, because we're seeing, you know, as some of these larger scale pipes that are deep in the ground go bad, you know, once they reach a certain depth, it's beyond our ability to fix. And if we could go in and slipline them, it's a lot easier and a lot less disruptive to traffic if we can slipline. And I think we have enough locations out there where it's feasible to slipline that we can keep some of these contractors busy, and if we can keep them coming in and knowing that they have regular work in the county, we'll start seeing better prices.
You know, this, ahead of all the departments that we've looked at, this one here probably is disturbing to me as any. For years, we, you know, we complained about the state cutting us at $7 million, and, you know, that's why our roads got in such disrepair and all the things that were, you know, that go along with the Rhodes budget. Now the county comes along, cuts it another million dollars. And I'm looking at you, but I know you didn't do that.
I will say...
Weston's not looking this way.
I'm looking down.
One big item is, you know, the last two years, last year and the year before last, we bought a grade all, we bought new grade alls. That was $400,000 right there. We're not buying a new grade all. And we did see additional money coming from the state in terms of highway user, not the full load, but we did see some of it come back. So, you know, as that money comes in, we can kind of balance the ask from the county.
But I think of all the meetings we had, all the people we had problems with drainage, and drainage does go along with the Rhodes budget, you know, in an indirect way to some point. I hear about, you know, all the roads that are in disrepair and how we, you know, they need to be paved, or, you know, the tree limbs need to be cut, we've got all those issues. You know, I was talking to one of the fire chiefs yesterday, and we were talking, and we're going to be talking to those guys in a few minutes, but, you know, about there are fire trucks going down some of these rural roads, you know, and the fire trucks are getting bigger all the time, and, you know, the tree limbs banging against the side of them or the mirrors. It just disturbs me that we're taking another $900,000 out of this budget, and I see you got, what, eight or 10 vacancies?
We have 13 vacancies right now.
Right here, I think, on this, there's about eight. I know I mentioned to Weston last meeting about looking at the pay scales, try to figure out whether we could get something done to get people, get more boots on the ground.
Yeah, and one thing I'd like to say that too is, you know, we had talked internally about, you know, okay, the boomaxes are doing a great job with doing some of these trees trimmed back, and do we ask for another boomax or two? Do we want three or four boomaxes? But the reality is, we just don't have the people to operate it. So I didn't want to ask for something that was going to sit there and not be used. You're right, the vacancy issue, if we were fully staffed, I could see saying, "Let's go in and ask for more equipment and more equipment," but I'm having a hard time filling the equipment I've got, so it makes the budget...
Well, you know, Mark and myself is talking, and I'll quote what, you know, we don't have people running to us and saying, "Do things at the airport, do things at the airport." We have people coming to us saying, "Fix our roads, fix our roads," and that's what I hear, you know, you know, and I just think this is way out of balance here with what's happened here, and I know that Dallas is...I'm not fussing with you, I'm fussing with Weston here.
Yeah, so if I...
Get out of the way from Weston.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully I don't rub off on him. So the bulk of that decrease, so 700,000 of that was one-time capital, so out at the Rhodes complex, new equipment shed so that the equipment they have can be undercover.
So this isn't your operating budget?
No, no, if you go to page...
It's the capital expenses in the operating budget.
Yeah, so the drop is primarily one-time, like, once we have that new salt shed, we're keeping the old one, we can now have more salt capacity, because we've had a few winters where we run out of snow, the state gets priority, or, I'm sorry, salt, not snow, hard to run out of snow, but we quickly run out of salt, and the state gets priority. So if we can stockpile that sand and so forth, so the bulk of that is one-time. So like Dallas said, they got grade alls last year, they don't need them.
But isn't this the chance to improve things? I mean, you know, isn't this the chance to make things better for the citizens of Wyman County? When you're, you know, you had a chance to put this back in there and maybe readjust the pay scales so you could get more people. And you talked about hiring equip...having equipment, what do you put first, a cart or the horse, you know? You can't hire a boomax operator unless you have the boomax, you know, or vice versa, you know, so you have to work all those things...
You have to hire the shovel operator.
Yeah, I know, unless you have the shovel. I, you know, it just really is being a person that's in the rural area that listens to this almost on a daily basis, I'll put it that way. There's very few days go by, especially if I'm at that store, that people ain't in their sand. And I will give you this, I did have a nice note last week about some work that got done on some roads that people were real happy about, so I will say that. Didn't cost much, because it was just trash cleaning, but it was a nice note anyway.
So...
I'm just disappointed that this is what's happening here.
The question comes down, I think what Joe's really asking is, where are you in the Rhodes list? Because, you know, we have this 12 pages of Rhodes, a list that goes in priority, and how are we in that priority? Are we following, are we completing the deadlines on time?
It is a process, I'll tell you, we are always at the very top of that list, simply because as we move down, other stuff just gets added, it's a rolling list. Every day we're out there replacing, you know, we've got what we know on the list, and then, oh, look, there's a pipe failure somewhere that no one was anticipating that we have to take forces away and go work on something else.
But are we meeting the deadlines, I'm assuming there are deadlines on that list? Are we meeting those deadlines?
You talk about fiscal deadlines as far as getting our work done within the fiscal year.
Would you say that you want to work on Wallston Switch Road, and you want to make sure that it's completely repaved by, you know, 2021 or something like that?
Right.
I mean, you have to have deadlines for all these projects.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that, yes, we are managing to meet our deadlines as far as what our contracts obligate us, or what the contractor has to have the work completed by. We're able to get things done on our end for that to happen, but it's kind of like Dallas said, we're either doing this, or we're doing this, or we're doing this, we're not doing all three at the same time. So we're kind of always jumping from trying to kind of stay ahead of things as we can.
You're about one crew, two men, one crew short, right, of being, having a full... Well, we typically have about seven people for a work crew at least, and again, we're 13 people short right now. Yes, we have hired a couple new people on, but then a couple other people have left, so it's not that we're not hiring people, unfortunately, it just seems to be people are leaving also.
Do you do any exit interviews with those people when they leave?
All of them.
Yeah.
All of them leaving.
So what is there, I mean, is paying...
As far as his findings, so...
Yeah, we don't see the results of those. I mean, some of the people have retired. Now, I'll grant you, some of them have come in and told us, "I'm leaving because, you know, you're paying me $35,000, and I'm going to go make $70,000 at a private sector job." You know, that's, you know, skilled labor is not cheap, you know, it's just not, you know. The mechanics and the mason's spots are, there are spots that are hard to hold on to, experienced equipment operators are hard to hold on to, but with the exception of the two masons right now, we'll be fully staffed with mechanics coming up, and our major equipment operators, the guys that are operating the grade alls and graders and stuff like that, you know, they're there. You know, we're having trouble filling the lower level spots, the MEO1s, things like that, but in that perspective, those are also the guys that we're hopefully getting good people in that we can then train under, because the guys that are operating, the crew leaders and the MEO4s, you know, if they're gone, naturally going to put a hurting on us, and that's always in the back of our mind, trying to get people trained up to operate that stuff. So right now, we're still able to perform our core functions, but it's just that there's not as much of a pool to look at as far as getting people trained to replace folks in succession planning.
And then when you get them trained up, they're expected to get better pay.
Yeah, and they typically do. I mean, when you're moving from an MEO1 to a 2 to a 3 to a 4, there are grade differences, and there are salary increases associated with that.
But I mean, that's not automatic, though. That's only if the position's open. So in other words, if somebody go to a 2, their 2 has to have left. So it's not automatic. But I mean, if we really want to talk about staffing shortages, we need to go back to 2009 and look at what our levels were in 2009 before we got all the refs and went from 70 people to 35. I mean...
Maybe we should have a work session on that.
I mean, if we really want to look at what Rhodes Division historically did and the staffing levels that we have, you need to go back to 2009 and not right now.
That's a future work session.
I think that's what Joe's getting at, though. Oh, yeah, I mean, maybe we don't need to go back to 70, but, you know, because, you know, you got more equipment, maybe you're working smarter. But I think it's a real fallacy on HR's and to not share those findings, those exit interview findings with the department, because how do they know what they may be doing something wrong? You know? I mean, I understand the part of it. For the most part, I think we generally have a good idea of why people leave. I mean, they don't generally just up and gone, and there's...I mean, and it's not a secret, most of the people that leave are leaving for somewhere for better pay. That's what it is most of the time. I don't think that our staffing level, I'm not saying that we have to go back to what we were in 2009, but all the different functions that we do, if we're going to do them simultaneously, then that's what the staffing levels were back in 2009.
You know, when we had people that are, you know, again, if the people that are cutting the grass in the summer are the same ones that are cutting the trees in the fall, so it's like, okay, if you need more trees trimmed in the summertime too, and you want to extend that out, well, I can't, we're cutting grass right now. And we are looking at tree trimming contracts, and we are going to be putting one out, those hopefully here shortly.
Well, you know, as far as roads getting paved, I mean, I know we do a contract with people to pave roads. We don't pave roads, but, you know, there's preparation that has to be done before a road gets paved.
We cut all the crossroad pipes in, we cut the shoulders, putting the shoulders back.
You know, that's other things that we need employees for, and possibly we could do more, do more roads if we had...it's just with all we've heard in the past two or three years, and, you know, it's quit raining, but it might start next week.
Don't, oh, God, you just...
It might start next week.
You're just ruining our weekend, Joe.
No, I know, I know, what I'm saying, and all we've heard, and to sit here and look at this and say, "Hey, man, you know, there's something wrong here."
So, so I do, I mean, I've tried to explain the one time, like, Lee doesn't need, he may want another salt shed, but we could build another one, the equipment and so forth. Operationally, Rhodes' budget has grown over the years. It was about $4 million in FY '16, 5.2 in '17, 5.8 in '18.
Well, now, don't get that mixed up with the health benefits that will bounce in there.
This doesn't include salaries, this is purely operational.
Yeah, but that's got your... Well, I'd be more interested in salaries, and I just don't...
Oh, no, I get the salary. What I'm saying is, in terms of drainage and what we're doing, their account did drop $104,000 from 19. A large part of that is fuel.
And that fluctuates on price, I understand.
And if you look at the Public Works budget, they have started taking over more, like Dallas mentioned, the drainage studies, so they went from $20,000, $30,000 a year to $245,000, $218,000, so...
That's a good point, too. So previous years, public work, Rhodes and solid waste have been expected to half-fund each the engineering department, and what I've done, sort of last year, now you're reflecting into this year, is those costs for the engineering department are reflected in the Public Works Engineering Budget. So things like copy releases, office supplies, and I know it sounds like little things, but they do add up to, like Wes said, about $100,000 that's now being shown under the department, so it's not something that's burdened onto Rhodes or solid waste that goes to that department.
Another thing, you were talking about losing a dump truck, did we get insurance for that, or is there insurance on that?
Yeah, we got a check for 60...
60 or 80, something like that.
That's not in the revenue section here, what happened to that?
Well, the way I understand it, that check comes in, it goes back into general fund. We're so close to the budget that we're asking for, you know, that money goes to the general fund pot, and we're asking for a budget out of general fund. If we were at the beginning of the year, correct me if I'm wrong, if we were at the beginning of the fiscal year and we had just lost that truck, to get that money back into the Rhodes budget, we'd have to come before council and request that this money...
It's not automatic, though.
Yeah, it goes...
We can request it, but I think the mechanism is...
It would come in as unanticipated revenue. We've done it for the sheriff's office many times when they have a total loss of a vehicle, and council does have to approve that revenue coming in.
But we should have, it should have gone back into the Rhodes budget, it was bought out of the Rhodes budget.
So the issue with that is, what was it, 60, 70, whatever it is? A new dump truck is $180,000, $200,000, depending on how it's specced. So if they don't have that other money to buy the rest of the truck, it doesn't really benefit.
But it would go for buying it. Is it required to be, is it required to be, is it required to be unanticipated revenue that is required to go back to the department, or is that optional?
My understanding is that's actually optional?
I think it's optional, or historically, that's how it's been done.
The other thing in revenues, you know, I asked this question earlier about the airport. There's been a lot of work done at the airport by County Rhodes, and there's no revenues from the airport coming into County Rhodes from what I see by these figures here. And I go by that airport twice a week, I go to Fox Road most of the time for the transfer station, and I've seen County Rhodes trucks out there, you know, and I asked this today, and of course, they said they were going to be doing aprons and stuff, and I've seen them one day putting the millings along the fences, and there's no revenue. So if you're going to have a budget, you need a true transparent budget that shows everything that different departments are doing, and you need to be transferring funds between those budgets, between those departments, so you get a true picture of what's really going on.
Sure. I think we can do a better job on that, keeping track of that. I do know with millings, every department from General Services to the airport to wrecking parks can use millings at some point, so Rhodes, if they're coordinating, you know, they had just milled a road, those millings can go get put down at very little time. Public Works and, you know, all three of us have experience with that, they have more equipment than the other departments have. So take like the rodeo or monster truck, they pay for the salaries of those people overtime that are then running the dirt into the civic center. I don't think they're paying for a rent on the equipment. I don't think we're at that level of, I guess, micromanaging and nitpicking, while a dump truck is at this rate commercially, so we're going to build a civic center that. I think we're looking at how can we work, how can the departments work together? Now, I get enterprise funds, I get budgets, I think the thought with some of the site development is that, you know, we use recycled concrete at Rhodes, we use it at solid waste. If they bust up a foundation at the airport and they can use that, that's a net positive, it's a symbiotic, it's a partnership between the airport and Public Works, but you bring up a great point that...
I'll give you an example, and I've not had this happen, but how about somebody's at the civic center and sees people, sees County Rhodes hauling dirt and putting it in the civic center, and they say, "Hey, you know, I'm trying to get my drainage fixed down here on such and such road, or I'm trying to get my road and grass cut, but all the County Rhodes guys rode to civic center work."
Yeah, they do it, we can explain that, they do it at night, they're being paid overtime, they've already worked a full day at this point, and...
But it's coming out of the Rhodes budget.
Which, it comes out of the equipment wear and tear, yes. The salaries, the overtime is paid by the civic center, presumably being recouped by the event, what they bring in for monster trucks.
But shouldn't that be in the revenue on County Rhodes here? I don't see that.
I think that's a discussion we need to have, I think we can do a better job.
Yeah.
I think the overtime is, I think they do, payroll doesn't direct pay, like, so I don't know that there's anything moving around.
I think you get where I'm coming from.
Yes, no.
So with Dallas, when was that dump truck rep?
It was last, I'm going to say November or December, it was dirt hunting season.
Just before he had the ditch.
Just after he had the ditch.
So, right when he got the road. So you got the insurance check already?
Yeah, yeah.
I think the insurance check came a month or two ago, it was, it took a while to get.
Did that come in front of the council?
I don't know, the check...
I don't, I don't think so, that's like any other insurance claim, however that's handled.
Unanticipated revenue for the county?
Yeah, I think it just goes into the general fund, and if we wanted to use it, then we...
Should it come to the council? It sounds to me like you just think getting things done like they ought to be done. Sorry, Weston.
I mean, if you want, if you want every insurance claim to come before you, I think that's going to overwhelm you all.
All we want is what's supposed to be done.
Right.
Okay. Well, if it's going back to the general fund, I mean, if it were a solid waste, or let's say an enterprise fund, if it were a solid waste dump truck, that should go back to solid waste, that should not go to the general fund, because that was bought with enterprise dollars.
Enterprise dollars, okay.
If it's bought with general fund money and it's a damage, yes, he's down a truck, but you could say a portion of what we're proposing in capital to get his one dump truck is coming from our savings. is coming from our savings from what went back. So...
What is unanticipated revenue?
Weston, it's always been my understanding that if the revenue wasn't estimated in the annual budget, then it's considered unanticipated revenue, regardless of where it's going. So in that situation, I believe the eighty thousand, unless it was in FY19's budget, should have come before council approval.
Right in the middle of the so-called recession, when the seven million dollars got cut out of Rhodes, I was on the airport commission, and three tractors showed up from Rhodes to the airport. And Bob, you know, was, Bob Bryant was very glad to get them, you know, he says, and they gave them to us because they were surplus. And I made an issue of that, you know, because of this transfer situation between departments, you know. I mean, basically, there was monetary value there, some monetary value, not much, but some. And that should be recognized to give a true budget picture, I guess is a good word to put it.
Sure. And we would have to look to see where they fully depreciated. Do they have, while they have some value, they may not have value on paper. And, yeah, no, that's something, again, I think one of the charter amendments said a transfer between departments over fifteen thousand dollars has to come to council. And, yeah, that can be handled with that. I think, I made a note, we should be tracking the cross-department work and to get a better value, a better idea of what's being spent. But I'll look into the unanticipated revenue, how insurance, because, you know, as you can imagine, with a county this size and the number of employees, accidents happen, and there's times where people owe us money, there's times where we owe them money. That's unanticipated expenses. How is that typically handled? I'm not, I'm not fully sure from the insurance side of the house when we, when we work with Legit, and we do get that check. It, my understanding, it just goes into the general fund, and we would have to come before council to reallocate it.
Sure. I think part of the reason we have conversations with you, this is very conservative council, yours is about the only department we almost beg you to take more money. It really is. I think part of the evaluation, as far as, you know, the efficiency operation also comes into play. When you're down thirteen employees, I think that's really something that really needs to be looked at. It's not the exec, it's not the council's job, it's the executive's job to make sure that that's getting, you know, addressed. We're just trying to say, hey, do you need to increase salaries? Is there something that you feel that you need to do within your department? We'd like to help you accomplish that if you really think that'll solve the problem. And I think that's what Joe hit on, I think we hit on that last year as well.
That's right.
Because we want you to run efficiently. We want the stormwater issues to be addressed. We want the roads to be addressed. You guys do really great work. You're up against a whole heck of a lot of odds, and I think we've been very satisfied with what you've done over the last couple of years, both of you guys, in addressing those concerns with the, with the county. So, again, we just want to make sure you're running as efficiently as possible, and if there's anything that's holding you up, such as a lack of employees to get the work done, we want to, we want to, you know, support you on that.
I can tell you right now, we can't be, there's no way we can be any leaner.
We know that. Yeah, we know that. We're not asking to go that way. We're trying to go the other direction, for once.
It's, it is a challenge sometimes to try to hit, you know, the hot spots and the people that are calling in and wanting things done, and to try to be ten places at one time and get the things done that we know that we should be doing anyway, because that's what we're supposed to do. Because there's a lot of things that we do that people don't realize that we do, but they're important things that we do. So, you know, and it's not just the things that they notice and that it is that they want done.
It's out of my nature to be sitting up here saying we need to spend more, but, you know, when you, when you, when you see this happening and you see what's happened in the past ten, well, since the recession, you know, and the seven million dollar hit, you say, what the heck, you know? I mean, how many times have I heard Wayne Strasberg sit up here and say, well, you know, we had that seven million dollars taken away from us from the state on roads. Then you look, and you're taking the, dropping a million here.
There's a way to keep the people that have been trained and know what to do from leaving, and a way to get people to come in and want to work there, that would be, that would solve a lot of our problems.
Well, you know, I used to, I used to hear, county didn't pay very well, but they got good benefits. I used to hear that story. But now you're, there's a lot of questions out there about what's going to happen to county benefits, and I know that's none of your guys' thing. So there's, there's, there's a lot of questions out there. And that don't take long to get around. If a guy's out here working for you for thirty thousand or thirty-five thousand dollars a year, and he pretty much guaranteed he's going to have these benefits when he retires, he might stay. But if somebody offers him forty or forty-five, he might be gone.
And the younger folks that, when they're, when they're coming in, they do seem to care more about the pay than the benefits. But, that said, you know, after they've gotten, you know, ten years under their belt, suddenly there's benefits.
They have a baby and they're married.
Yeah, suddenly those benefits start mattering a little bit more, so it's, you almost wish you could have, like, an on-off, so it's like, okay, I'm going to turn them off, and I'm going to get more pay, now I need the benefits. Let me flip that switch on.
Especially if they got twins in the oven, right?
No comment.
We've got to wrap up here. Any other questions?
You guys do good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Give it credit where credit is due. Yeah, see, if there's anything you guys want to work on, just let us know.
Will it.
All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have a good day.
Yeah, you guys, too.
Yeah. So you got a new salt shed, got your salt shed done?
They're getting ready to start on it. They just finished the equipment shut, it looks good.
Oh, good.
They can even build that tunnel.
I think the, ours outside.
Yeah, there you go.
See y'all.
Thanks, man.
My number's fire.
I don't know that that did much good, but, you know.
No, I think you made a lot of good points, seriously.
My number is, oh, that's...
Right.
Oh, sick.
Next one, I believe, is a one oh three.
Difference between MEO one and MEO four.
One oh three.
Eighteen, nineteen, and twenty in the big book.
That's not a real salary.
Yeah.
I got to leave around one thirty, John, so.
Get offended.
All right.
I got to get Roger through.
Eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
I didn't come dressed up for this.
You're looking good, you're looking good.
I was going to wear the same thing.
Might as well get your picture taken while you're here.
Your picture taken.
Come on up front. Come on up, John. We're ready for you.
It's safe.
If each of you, make sure you're speaking into a mic when you get it. You may have to share it sometime. Yeah, there you go. And just, if you could announce it, who you are and your title for the, for the public.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Billy White, president of the County Chiefs Association.
Go ahead, John.
Grady Ronblad, president of Wycomico County Firefighters Association.
Joe Morris, vice president of Fire Chiefs Association.
Thank you.
Marty Scarsen, committee chairman.
Thanks for, thanks for taking time to be here, gentlemen. How we normally like to start out, like, you know, Marty, if you want to just take the lead and let us know how the progress is going as far as the budget and, you know, where you think you are at this stage, and then we would ask some questions.
We've been in good contact with, with the county executive and his finance director, Michelle. We, of course, asked for some things. We weren't sure how the outcome was. We were just out in the hallway discussing some of the finer points of what we asked for and what we got and, or what we anticipate getting. Overall, pretty satisfactory, I believe, if I can, maybe, yep. And so we're just here talking to the county council and make sure that we're all on the same page.
Are you happy?
Pretty happy.
We're never happy.
Satisfied.
Well, I received a call yesterday about pagers not being responsive to the new radio system. Is that being taken care of?
That's been addressed. I believe it should be in the budget to replace, I believe it was five hundred and ten pagers throughout the county. There was two options to go with, and when we weighed it out, we believed the pagers were more viable.
Okay.
So that has been addressed in the budget.
Okay.
And I think, speaking from what we came up with at the different chief meetings, everybody seems to be satisfied with that agreement that we came up with.
I just had one question about the radio system while we were on it, and that's about Delmar's base station. Every fire station has their own base station, and all the state legislature.
Thank you.
All the stations got, got their base stations, but at Delmar, we had to, we had to purchase our own compared to the rest of the county stations because of the, our direct relation with Sussex County, whereas we answer calls in both districts. We were anticipating, hoping that some of that expense would be reimbursed to our, to our station concerning the purchase of that base station.
How was that decision made?
We haven't been able to get an answer.
Not sure.
We've asked several times over the last, what, year and a half, Joe?
Yes. We pretty much didn't have a choice. We just had to go ahead and pay for it, because it wasn't worth it.
Got to have it.
You know, it's one of those things.
But it was supposed to be a one-for-one deal.
I do know, I do know that when Billy and I sat down with the representatives from emergency management about the pagers, the pagers Delmar is getting are specific to our Dalton base station, so that it'll operate off of our base station instead of the county-wide towers, and that way our rebroadcast are taken care of, and we won't lose them for any particular reason anymore. It was an emergency thing. Somebody had to pay for it, we had to get to work.
Sure.
Joe, just out of curiosity, Sussex help out and all?
Yes, they originally put the base station in. And most of the time, if we have radio issues, we just pick up the phone and they come over. It's a little bit different setup, but our whole base station was designed by Sussex County's emergency management team, so that's why it works.
They've got a good system on there?
I guess, wanted to move on. One of the, the items that we brought up when we were meeting with Mr. Culver, the county executive, is the importance of our EMS system in the county. I have spoken in front of the council and to the county executive many times over the past ten to fifteen years, and our EMS system is, is evolving into a very, very expensive venture. And we've asked for some help from the county as far as providing benefit packages. It's getting very expensive for the fire companies, and we don't feel like that it's fair that we have to take. Now, we all know that we take the billing monies that we bring in, the appropriations as they come in, donations, it all goes into funding the EMS through each station. But it's getting so expensive, and we're up against a lot of people, local people, traveling, caregivers, traveling to other jurisdictions because of the pay and benefit packages that are, that are offered across the bridge and up north in Delaware and, you know, of course, Ocean City and different places. So we've, we've asked for some help for, particularly in the benefit part, we were asking for the, our employees to be, to be able to get the county insurance, health insurance, was one of the things we brought up. I'm not sure where we stand at on that part of it, and we haven't heard really too much about it. But, that being said, it's getting to be very expensive, and there are some companies who are very close to having to write letters to the county executive and the county council concerning the possible getting out of EMS in this county, because they're having to work fundraisers to fund EMS. It's not fair. It's not fair to the volunteers in this county. It's not fair that we have to fund a, a county...
EMS system.
System. We don't feel like it's fair. I can, I can almost venture to say that, and I can't, can't answer for every chief in this county, but I would say that there would be a consensus that it's getting to be a very expensive venture. And to give you a little insight on that, I've brought some figures from, from Delmar. I can't speak for every company. I don't have access to their finances. But last year, we had a, we had a, a budget of five hundred and fifty thousand for employees. That's for, for salary and benefits. This year has gone up to seven hundred and fifty, and it's probably going to be more than that, because we've had to add a third employee on almost twenty hours a day now, seven days a week, because of, because of basically going into, our own call volume going up and going into other jurisdictions to support their, their needs under mutual...
Jurisdictions.
Huh?
With jurisdictions.
Others. Adjoining jurisdictions.
In Sussex County?
All the adjoining jurisdictions.
Marty, I understand what you're saying. Where would, where would the fire departments be in Wycomico County as far as structure-wise, financial situation, if they didn't have EMS at all? In other words, if the ambulance formula was taken right out of, in other words, it was just a fire department?
I can't answer for all companies, but...
Does the ambulance subsidize the fire departments too, any, or is it more of a drain the other way, or? Sounds like you're saying it's more of a drain the other way.
It is my guess, and I don't know, because I don't have everybody's figures, but from the...
Please don't take this as a suggestion, because I get misquoted a lot of times. I'm just asking this question now because of what you brought up.
From the companies that I'm aware of, I'm sure that it's pretty, pretty close to a wash as far as income and expenditure for most companies. But the four surrounding companies, and maybe you could add probably another, another, probably Pittsfield, you could probably add into that, too. So we'll say the five surrounding companies are probably having to subsidize out of their fundraising and from other funds to meet the shortfalls. I will not include Delmar in that, because we're, we're a different entity. But the, but the other three surrounding companies and Pittsfield, I would say are probably running a shortfall, just guessing. Knowing, as you know, I'm treasurer of Delmar Fire Department and been involved in the, in the budget process for many years. So I think that's where we're at with that.
If I might add to that, I've brought some figures from my department, Westside, which is very similar to several of the other small outline departments. We are having to supplement EMS, absolutely. I have brought enough copies to hand out to all council members, and if I can direct you to the bottom, just based on having one person on the clock twenty-four hours a day, the EMS grant or the EMT grant does not cover even our annual salaries. And that's not including any benefits, any time off, any...
I'll pass them on.
Thank you, Mr. Culver. Thank you. Just based at...
You can hand mine out, too. I've got...
The hourly wage we're taking from the operating grant.
Hey, Bill, we need a couple.
Have enough copies, I have some.
Laura needs some, and...
Sorry about that.
Josh, definitely.
There's your extras.
But yes, what we're doing is we're taking the EMT grant, applying that a hundred percent to salaries, taking money from the operating rate, applying that to the salaries, and then we're transferring from our fundraising and applying that to salaries. Again, if I can direct you to the bottom, and you can see right out of the gate, just on one person at a low wage, and I will say that is a low wage. If you look at other departments, they pay more in Wycomico County, the surrounding counties pay significantly more. With minimum wage increasing, that's putting even more pressure to bringing good providers into the county. So we're all facing pressure financially to raise wages, increase benefits. At the same time, we are not getting the income to cover the operational cost. I've also brought quotes just for a couple of the devices that Westside's bought over the last few years. And just for a single light pack monitor, monitor defibrillator, you can see that down there on the bottom. There's two different... that down there on the bottom, there's two different quotes there, is almost $30,000. We have to maintain two. Delmar's now maintaining three, Fruitlands maintaining three. The cost you see on the bottom are just maintaining one unit and one provider.
Is MEMS still offering the 50-50 grant for that? You have to qualify.
That's, and that's, you have to qualify, and it's based on call volume and a number of other factors.
Basically, what you're saying, some fire departments are probably bringing in enough extra money as far as billing to cover.
No.
To make up the difference, some fire departments aren't. Isn't that where the difference is made up, though?
Well, we try to use the billing to make up the difference, but I know, speaking for Sharp Towns, we still come up, even with what the county gives us and EMS billing, we still come up where we have to contribute 30,000 to 40,000 a year.
But wouldn't somebody like Delmar or, you know, a busier fire department have?
I have that figure on the sheet that I gave you, and I can tell you that with a budget this year of 750,000, our billing is probably going to be around 300,000. With the money that the county gives us as far as appropriations is another close to 200,000, you can see that we're going to have a shortfall.
And again, to confirm what he's saying, for the smaller outline departments, I do the billing for our department. We are billing annually roughly 40 to 50. We get back 30 to 40% of what we bill.
And you can get it all.
The bulk of it is written off. So, I mean.
You don't use a bill collector?
No, no, we absolutely do not use.
Most of the departments you talk to do not send it to collections.
I know one company who does deal with that, with going after people.
You want in Caroline County?
No, local.
There is one.
No, no, I meant the bill collector in Caroline County.
Oh, yes, we do use medical claim made to bill.
Yeah, no.
I thought you meant collections, but we never send a collection.
There are companies who do use collections, and I can't answer for those companies, but I do know that it brings in almost nothing.
I know some end up going to court.
That's correct.
And yes.
By the time you weigh out the benefits of going to collection, it actually, when we look into it, it actually costs us money, or was going to cost us money to try to pursue it that way.
Just to give you an example, money-wise, most departments also have a subscription program where you send stuff out. Families pay a certain amount of money.
That was the original.
Our, yeah, right. Our subscription program, as it sits right now, is not enough to restock our ambulances annually, and that's just for supplies that we have to pay for out of pocket. I know you've all seen the EpiPen thing on the news. Some stuff is just astronomically overpriced, but.
If I can jump in on that, Joe?
Go ahead.
The defibrillator pads that we use sometimes are covered by the hospital and sometimes not, but the pediatrics definitely are not, and they're expensive, very, very expensive. We have used the IO drills, which is a standard of the industry, okay? It's a standard. It's like starting IVs, it's like giving cardiac drugs, it's like, it's just a standard. IO drills are. And they're $120 a needle that we have to pay for out of our pocket when we go in a cardiac arrest, okay? It's an industry standard, and we have to pay for it.
When you take a cardiac arrest patient to the hospital over here, are they billing for those pads?
Who knows? I don't know.
I thought it was an even exchange every time.
At one time, it used to be, but there's a, and Marty can speak more from his standpoint, but it's a lot less than what we used to get years ago.
And they're not keeping the pads in the locker, and you put in the patient code anymore?
No, sir.
We do get them from the charge nurses if they have them on hand.
But they do not supply, like you said, I just paid $400 for pediatric pads because they do not supply for children. They will supply even one-for-one for adult.
And these are unfunded mandates that we receive. You hear it from other entities that come before you about unfunded mandates, and these are some of the things that we have to do as requirements for our EMS that the additional funding is just not being provided.
So, assuming you've brought this issue to the county executive, what are you hearing? I know he's in the room.
They were gracious. The county executive was gracious enough. We asked for more money in the sinking fund, which is an equipment fund. They did increase that fund, which we appreciate a lot because that was one of the main things that we asked for, and that's what, and they gave it to us. So I have to thank, I have to thank the county executive for that.
But it's not, that doesn't address this EMS thing that we're talking about.
Well, it's difficult. It's a difficult thing, and we're having to provide the service that in most municipalities is provided by the county.
In most counties.
In most counties.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, I went to before the chief's committee, and we asked about, you know, putting in a centralized EMT program. At that time, nobody was interested in it. Chief White has come back during our negotiations for this year's budget, has asked us to look at it, and we are. I've already talked to Jack Heath from the city of Salisbury because all EMTs, that's what we really need more than we do fire service, are the EMTs right now. So we are taking that under advisement, and we're going to look at it, see if we can give these EMTs benefits that the county employees have. So it's going to cost, but it's worth it, so.
And that's the worst problem, we're not interrupting with the.
Go ahead, please.
We're competing with, as Marty said, other entities that provide these retirement benefits and so forth. We just lost one of our providers in Sharp Town. We've been advertising for almost a month now, and we've only had two people apply. Where years ago, and Marty can tell you when he worked there, it was nothing to have six or eight people apply. So that's what we're dealing with. The market is larger for these folks, and the demand is higher as well, and there's just not enough out there to fill the void, I don't feel.
So I guess the grant funding was just flat funded this year, right, the operating?
Actually, there was a slight increase on their sheet. It breaks it down per company of what we asked for and what we received, and there are slight increases in the fund.
I've got a grants operating from 12/21 to 12/15, unless I'm looking at the wrong thing. Under volunteer fire.
I don't have a copy of the actual.
Yeah.
Page 109, is it?
Yeah, the fund that was decreased, I'll step in for Michelle, after she explained to me, because we did have the same questions. It's actually a decrease for the, well, there was two main decreases. One was in the workman's comp for the volunteer fire department side that the county provides because there was less claims, and it's a self-insured fund, I believe that's how it's explained. Yes. The other part that was downsized was, there was a one-time grant last year for upgrading our decon units, and so that was taken out of this. That was the 21,000, the minus 21,000 that was taken out of it, so. One of the other main issues that we brought up to the county executive and his staff is that, too, getting back to our employees, is we have to pay our workman's comp for our employees. That alone for Delmar, and I cannot speak for every other fire company, but at Delmar, our workman's comp is $50,000 for our employees, and that's a hit when you start talking about, you know, the cost factor of our items that we need to supply to our employees and, you know, I mean, to the citizenry.
Has Delmar experienced a lot of claims, or?
No, no, this is just the base, this is the base cost of.
Whether that was unusual or not.
No, of having to provide coverage for employees. And the county, up to this point in time, gave us around $8,000, and they did increase it. We asked for an increase.
Is that just for the EMTs, or is that including fire department personnel and all duty?
That's separate. It's just our employees, just the EMT paramedics. So, it's an expensive venture that we have to carry that cost on, you know? So, that's part of the benefit package that costs the fire companies to provide. So, none of those things I'm sure y'all can address at all. I know it starts with the county executive, but I am here to make you aware that, as we have Mr. Culver, that we're struggling, that the numbers, our call volume is exponentially increasing. I mean, we're going up from every year, or last year, we were at around, close to 1,400 EMS calls in Delmar, and we've jumped up to 1,800 this year. So, it's just the.
Why?
Why? Because people call for an ambulance?
Why do people call for an ambulance?
That is a complex question. There is, of course, the fact of the aging population with the baby boomers. There is the fact that it is essentially common knowledge that under Comar, if you call and say you want to go, we have to take you. We cannot say, oh, you don't need an ambulance. We don't have an alternative in this county or in this region to transport you other than the ED. It is systemic in this area that we provide transportation for people who don't have other means to get to Salisbury. I experienced it when I rode in Salisbury. I experienced it at Westside. We routinely have people that come from Salisbury to Westside, visit friends, whatever. It means, whatever reason they come down, do not have transportation for the 18-mile ride back. There is no cab company or bus service. They will call 911, claim an injury. We arrive at PRMC, we take them in, as soon as everybody walks out of the ring, they walk out the front door. So, it's a, that's not just a simple why. There is a plethora of reasons of why we are seeking increase in call volume.
And they know they're not going to pay that bill.
I can tell you, though, that MEMS is looking very closely. That's the state system that manages EMS statewide. They are looking at alternatives because it's not just here that this is occurring. It's statewide problem, and I think they've got some models that they're looking at as far as transporting to standalone facilities and that sort of thing. So whether that happens or not, I do know they're looking closely at that to try to stem that problem.
Is it Salisbury or somewhat, some group that started a program instead of calling 911?
Salisbury.
What is that? I'm not fully.
Yeah, somebody answers.
Yes, I don't know the legalities of that either.
Does it working, I wonder? Is it cut down on transports?
I can't speak to that for experience as that is working. It is actually Salisbury-Wycomico integrated first care team, which is composed of Salisbury's EMS captain, Chris Truitt, paramedic David Pippin, a nurse from, I believe, PRMC, and a nurse from the health department.
So whether they respond?
They don't respond. What the process is, is our highest call volume patients that are taxing the resources the most, specifically in the city, because obviously they run the bulk of the calls. That's why it started there, but it is open to other citizens of the county. The citizen has to opt in. We can identify there's high call volume patients that were routinely taken. This is actual patients, not the, oh, I need transportation type deal. But if that patient agrees, they will, the health department will make contact. If that patient agrees, they will opt into the system. They come and visit on a schedule that they work out with that person, and they provide at-home assessment, more or less. They make sure that the person's getting their medicines, they get into the doctor's visits, that sort of thing, so that it is off uploading us for taking people that their prescriptions run out, because that's one we have commonly also. Their prescriptions run out, they've not got it refilled, they have a problem with an existing health condition, and we wind up transporting. So it alleviates some of that, but it's not a fix for everything. It is certainly beneficial, but it is not unfortunately going to address every issue we come upon.
Not including that. Unfortunately, it's a trial program, and it's being trialed in many different jurisdictions, but there's no funding for it. So they're having to get their funding for this from a variety of places, including the county health department, I believe, supports, and the hospitals support some of it. So there's different support for it, but it's not funded by anybody at this point in time.
Some cities are allowed to give out taxi vouchers.
The taxi companies.
Mr. Hasty's question, is there anybody in here that's under the age of 40? Okay. We all know, and Larry and everybody sitting here has been in the fire service for about 25 to 30 years. He was asking about the increased call volume. Look at the population explosion. It used to be Delmar ended at somewhere around the end of St. Drew, and Salisbury started when you hit Zion at the auto dealerships. There's, you just go over a magic intersection and you're in from one to the other. Same way with Heber, and we're building these developments, Pond's Edge, Mill Pond. All of a sudden, now you've gone from farmland to 500 families, you know, living in one place. You've got to, we have to address that need as well, and it just, 30 years, 40 years of growth, and we're constantly playing catch-up. Because we're put in that situation.
I'd asked earlier about the, you know, I recognize the sinking fund increase that's there, but then I was talking earlier about the operating grants, which is about the 110,000, right, for each station. That's what I was referring to as flat funded, right?
Yes.
But you're saying that you're using a lot of that money, and you're finding shortfalls simply because of the burden that you're having with EMS, all right? We talk in the same pocket of money?
Yes. Yes, it's all, it all is a factor, that's for sure. Some of that money, of course, the, what we ask for in the sinking fund is to reimburse our expenses, what it costs us to replace equipment. The life packs, you know, usually have lifespans of 10 years. The ambulances, lifespans of 10 years, seven to 10 years. Seven years for Delmar, 10 years, sometimes 12 years in outline companies.
We're stretching it out longer, trying to make them last.
I mean, we asked for an increase in the sinking fund. We went from 30 to 40, which we really appreciate, but we just ordered a new engine at Delmar, $700,000. That, that's a hard, you know, I mean, the sinking fund's going to help pay for that, but the state only gives us $30,000 a year, you know, which is next to nothing when it costs, when you're talking about replacing equipment. Life packs, 30,000. The stretchers, another 20,000, the battery-powered stretchers, trying to save our staff's physical needs or their backs and everything. Now, the next thing that we've gone to is these lifts that are on the back of ambulances, another $20,000 a unit. You know, I mean, and we're playing, like Joe said, we're playing catch-up. This stuff adds up, and the standards change, but we're getting basically pennies on pennies on the dollar increases of the funding. I mean, literally, and I can tell you for certain that it literally takes a million dollars to run a fire station today, and that's no, well, that's no fire salaries. That's EMS salaries, but no fire salaries. A million dollars a year, you know, I mean, and we appreciate everything that the county does for us and the state of Maryland, but there's a shortfall there.
And we're all out here fundraising, but as everybody knows, we're competing for the same money now that the church, the lodge, the legion, and everybody else is out here asking for.
Same way with volunteers.
That's correct. Volunteers are not what they used to be. I mean, they're not knocking the doors down. I know they're not in Sharp Town, they may be in other places, but, and we're still out here providing service that we said we would. And sometimes I think that's taken for granted, not necessarily here, but throughout the county. You know, when you call 911 and they call for a fire engine or an ambulance, somebody's going to show up. You know, and we're usually there within, you know, five or 10 minutes of when we get called, and it may take longer for others to show up to a system, but, you know, we're there. People are used to it, and like I said, I feel it's taken for granted sometimes.
Yeah, people don't appreciate you until they need you.
That's exactly right.
They love us when we come, that's for sure.
A lot of them don't understand that we're volunteering.
That's correct.
People assume it's like me, people that I'm. People assume it's like me, people that I went to high school with, people that are from this area. Oh, you work at the fire department? No, I work in Wilmington for the railroad. You know?
Well, it is, it is an unpaid job anymore.
Well, it is.
And I'm, to get back to Joshua's question too, I've been in this business for a long time in EMS, EMS and fire, 40 years. And I can tell you that 40 years ago, when I started out as an EMT, I never picked people up. And today, we get called out to people's houses every shift to pick people up. That's a major thing that we do today, is picking people up. They've fallen and they can't get up. They don't have any family around, they don't have any friends around, and who do they call? They call the fire department. Why is that? Why are we suddenly to pick up people?
And because of our lackluster, you know, healthcare system in the country, you've got a lot of people, we've now shifted the model to age in place. I'm from Mardala, there's not a lot of folks that get down there, it's a very rural area. You know, you're there to age in place so that you can keep costs down, so that you're not going off to the hospital. You're, you know, this is putting, what I'm wondering in the future is, is this a larger policy problem? Is this just the beginning? It's not just, it's not just the older folks that you have. My dad died of dementia, you have a lot of folks that are dealing with it, she's there. You also then have a younger, a whole other set of population that has no money, no, no ability to get where they, there's, there's no phone for them to go on Uber to call for a cab, you know, so they're looking for other means. So I'm, I'm wondering where all that is going and how much that's impacting you guys.
That sounds like a political question.
Yeah, it seems like whenever we deal with, with the fire, fire departments, we're also always dealing on a stipend-type basis, and I was, I don't know what the Fire Chiefs Association take is on that as far as whether or not they're, we need to look inside our operations to see whether there's a more efficient means by which to get all the money where it's needed to the right areas of the, of the county.
It's been discussed. Chief Morris brought it up last year when he was president, and we have brought it up again this year to look into those avenues, but for right now, we're working with what we have and it seems, I want to say...
It's a tough question. Everybody wants to get into it, because you're afraid you're going to might maybe short someone, one area for another area. And I recognize that, but I'm wondering whether you would start at a base level, maybe where you are right now, and going forward, whether adjustments are done on a need basis as opposed to just continuing with the stipend year after year after year. Say, okay, guys, everybody's full, we're not going to, we're not going to take from here to give to here, we're going to leave like it is. You're all happy today, that's fine. And progression from now on, flat funding from now on, look at what the options might need to be.
That's not political, that's going to be you guys.
Right.
It's best political.
It's still political.
I, I would, I would, and so would everybody here, love to be able to do that and say, hey, we need X amount of dollars and we'll be good for the next five years, but you know just as well as I do, somebody will be sitting in his seat after I get out of this. Why did you give them that? They don't need that much money. And every year it's a political thing with the budget.
Well, that's why we have...
We'd love to be...
Well, it would have to be on, on data-driven.
Right.
Literally data-driven.
The, the issue I see with that, Mr. President, is the need for the equipment and the personnel does not change based on the call volume. Someone still has to be in service, ready to go with the appropriate equipment. If you say data-driven and you take Powell or Allen or Westside that runs 200, 150 to 250 calls a year versus Delmar that runs 500, 1,000, 3,000, however many, I know it's not 500, that's like Hebron's numbers, but...
You said 18.
I'm sorry, forgot. I wasn't taking notes. But the, Delmar has to staff more people, so certainly they do have more of a need for funding, but it doesn't take away, at our current funding in the budget, the outliers I just mentioned, Charctown, Powell, Allen, we're, they're still not meeting their staffing needs. What we're receiving funding-wise, not to be disrespectful, but is not the bare minimum to even run your outlying stations, let alone one running that busy. Or Fruitland who is staffing multiple units with three personnel. To say that it's needs-driven doesn't do it a good service, because then you start looking at, okay, these aren't even at their base for the smaller ones, they're nowhere near what they need. When you start taking that and looking at it, there's the concern of, well, what happens to our funding when we're not even meeting the minimum we need at this point in time?
Well, yeah, and I think that's a good point. We have to, I think, establish a base that we feel everyone is getting sufficient, a sufficient revenue stream for what they really need to operate. And then capital would be more of a stipend-based process. I think the operational would be one where we might see different variances in, in revenues. If you follow me, because I recognize what you're saying, yeah, you may have a smaller town, but this town needs three fire trucks as much as this town needs. This town needs a ladder as much as that one, not that I'll do, but I recognize that. There's some consistency that you have to maintain across the board, but I'm wondering just if there's another, and you guys are going to have to maybe sit and try to figure, I know this has been ongoing for, forever.
That's correct.
But it'd be nice to try to see some progress, and in the meantime, you can say, what is the base value that everyone needs to come to just to sustain operations? That may be a help to it, and it sounds to me it's going to be a big number.
It'd be nice, we've talked about it at several of the meetings we've had this year, the budget meetings especially, if we could come out with a projection, like a five, five-year plan or a projection, or a 10-year or something along that lines. But as Chief Morris said, the four of us can sit here today, and this time next year, you might have four different people sitting here, they're going to tell you something totally different than what we're, we're telling you now.
Somehow we can, we can create, create some type of long-term consistency or standards that we would know, but, I mean, I agree with what I think others have said here, I think it is taken for granted, and sooner or later it may come back to bite us if we don't get ahead of this and establish the ground, ground-level basis of what everybody really truly does need, instead of trying to hedge and hedge and hedge and kick it down the road. And meanwhile, we all know that all your costs are going through the roof, just like Marty said, all these costs that are keep, keep adding up from the health industry. You can't just keep ignoring it.
And as Marty was talking about, the EMS on the fire side, it's the same thing, the cost of turnout gear from when we started 30 years ago is more, you know, it's considerably higher. I think the last, we got prices the other day, it's like $3,500 a set now. You know, that's for a coat.
It's got a shelf like, what, five years or 10 years?
Seven to 10, depending on the usage. You know, so does SCBA. We just bought 28 sets in Charctown, it was 280-some thousand dollars for breathing apparatus.
And the bottles have to be tested every three years.
And they've got a life on them now.
The bottles have a vigil every year and hydrostatic every five, on the fiberglass.
Marty, being you're involved in the Delmar, how does this model with Sussex County work with the chase vehicles and the ambulances? Is that more efficient, you think?
It varies from area to area. In Sussex, they're making it work, but they're still have, they still give appropriations out to the fire companies to staff their ambulances.
I'm sure they have to do that.
There are, there are a lot of entities that start out with chase units, and they gradually phase in into full box units as, you know, as the years go on. I know, I'm originally from across the bridge, and all those companies over there originally started out with chase units, and then eventually they end up with...
Carillon, Dorchester, Talbot, they're all...
Yeah. They transitioned over to full units.
When you say you move into full box units, did they move full box units as a, as a roaming box unit, or did they just stay at one station?
It varies from district, jurisdiction to jurisdiction.
That's what I was wondering, yeah.
Dorchester and Carillon have fixed units, and then those other areas, as Marty said, they do roam, they don't have a specific station to stay in, they have an area to stay in.
And so you could basically use less, possibly less units by having them roam or...
We, we've, we've done studies here in Wycomico to, to that effect, because of wondering how much it's going to cost, because we, we understand that one day, there's going to be a breakpoint time where it's going to be actually more cost-effective for the county just to take it over versus just piecemeal money out to different companies. And to be honest with you, it's going to take at a minimum of five units, and that's not including Salisbury, that's just out in the county. It's going to take five full units for transport units and with, you know, with, you know, almost 50 employees. So it's, it's going to be quite, quite expensive to do, no matter, and then you're looking at either basing those units in stations that are existing, or, or building new stations like, like Sussex has done for their, their chase units. So there's a lot of different models out there to, to pick from, that you have to choose to fit your, your needs.
Yesterday, we had three, Parsonburg, Willards and Pittsville, where all three called to one accident and all three of them transported people. So, I mean, you know, it's, we can't fix it sitting here.
No. We do the best we can. We'll try.
But you got to talk about it.
But you gotta, you gotta figure out a point in time when we are going to start trying to fix it. I mean, right now, we've got a, and I might say this incorrectly to some of them, but we've got a Band-Aid on it right now, and we need to look at something down the road, as Mr. Cannon said, that's more permanent, you know, that's going to resolve this problem as the, the county continues to grow, the demand for EMS is increasing dramatically, as everybody in here stated, and we need to find something that's going to be a long-term fix, whether it be chase units or box units or whether we go about it, so.
Yeah, and I think one thing you can overlook in, in the volunteer industry, the, the greatest asset you have is morale. I mean, you have to have that if you're a volunteer organization, and I, I believe part of what the county's support is, is to maybe help encourage that and to maintain that morale, you know, with all the work that you're, you're doing there too. So I'm, sincerely, I'd like to, to see how we can maybe find a really good fix for this, because again, I think, like you said, it's Band-Aids, we're kicking it down the road, we're putting Band-Aids on, and I think we really need to find a more sustainable solution.
So you're happy otherwise with your budget figures that you're okay with?
Well, I'm satisfied. I'm satisfied.
I think you're satisfied.
You're, you're patient, you're very patient, man.
Very political.
So, but really, I think the input's very, very great to have, I appreciate all the work that you've done to, to bring this to our attention today, and see, it looks like we'll be working more next year than we will this year. I really think we will.
All right, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good seeing you.
Well, I'm not, I'm not...
That's what you...
Well, you need to show up, too. Well, I'll have to. Why don't you do it?
Take care. Good seeing you.
entertain a motion, adjourned.
Second.